This closed session of, or this regular meeting of the city council is called to order. Roll call, please.
Council agency members Durham, Lingle, Rougey, Mayor pro temp vice chair Cecilia Martner, Mayor and Chair Mike Semensky.
Here. Oral communications, maximum five minutes per speaker. Is there anyone that would like to speak? Seeing no one try to get up?
That's right.
We're closing. And we will now move to a closed session to consider three business items listed on the agenda. We will return the council meeting to open session. I'm sorry for the, for the slight delay in getting started. Our closed session ran a little longer than we thought. We'll make up for it. We won't take any breaks tonight. We'll go straight through till midnight without... Oh, okay. Overruled. Then I can drink my coffee. Will, please stand for invocation, pledge of allegiance. Reverend Cunningham? Is our, pardon? Is Reverend Cunningham here? Tony, would you like to lead us?
Okay. You bow your heads. I want to thank you, Lord, for being with us tonight. We pray that you will guide us, lead us, give us the strength and understanding to make the right decisions for the community of this city, the citizens that we support and that we sponsor and that we work with on a daily basis. Give them the praise and the guidance that they need as well. These things that we pray. Amen.
Thank you. You follow me in the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please be seated. After we opened the meeting tonight at 6:00, we adjourned to a, to a closed session. We moved in there to deal with three items that are on the agenda. There were no final actions, no reportable actions taken. In each of those cases, we reviewed the current conditions and, and the issue is continuing. Presentations presented elsewhere. On March 20th, Councilman Lingle presented a resolution to Norma Anderson. Council member Martner presented a resolution to David Lemon. Council member Rougey presented a resolution to Horace Reed. And I presented a resolution to Jane Dewis honoring Dick Dewis and to Vera Sally Godwin, Godwin, I think it should be, honoring her service to the Lompoc community. This was during the tree planting Arbor Day ceremonies and in Beatty Park. Tonight, we have some presentations. I'd like Library Director Molly Gerald to come forward. Will that pick it up? Okay, good. Whereas libraries everywhere play a vital role in supporting the quality of life in their communities, and whereas librarians help people of all ages and backgrounds find and interpret the information they need to live, to learn, and to work in a challenging economy, and whereas libraries are part of the American dream, places for opportunity, education, self-help, and lifelong learning, and whereas libraries serve as critical technology hubs for people in need of free web access, computer training, and assistance in finding job resources, and whereas for every dollar spent on a library, a community sees an average of $4 in return, and whereas library use is up nationwide among all types of library users, and whereas libraries across America are celebrating National Library Week this week. Now therefore, I, Michael Semensky, Mayor of the City of Lompoc, do hereby proclaim April 11th through 17th as National Library Week. And I encourage all residents to visit the library often, to take advantage of the wonderful resources available, and to thank the library staff for making information accessible to all residents and visitors within the Lompoc community. I have heretofore, or heron too, set my hand and caused the official seal of the City of Lompoc to be affixed on the sixth day of April 2010. I'd like to present this to our librarian. I'd like to give Molly an opportunity to, to comment on Library Week and on anything else that she'd like to present at this time.
Thank you very much. Thank you, Mayor Semensky. Thank you very much, Council and Mayor. I would like to mention that you're all invited to a celebration of National Library Week on Monday evening, April 12th, in the Grossman Gallery. And Fred Friedman, who is host of Jazz Liner Notes on Public Radio, KCBX, will be our host for a special program, multimedia program on the history of rock and roll. So it should be a fun evening. There'll be refreshments, and our volunteers will also be honored that evening. Over 100 volunteers have donated over 9,000 hours of service in the past year as volunteers. And there's one volunteer that we would like to honor especially this evening, Fran Houston, if you could come forward, and Christina Chiel. And as Fran comes forward, I would just like to mention a little bit about the award we are giving her this evening. There's a nationally recognized award for a lifetime of volunteer service. It's called the President's Call to Service. And it comes with a pen, a certificate, and a letter signed by our president. So I'll just take a moment to share the letter with you quickly. Fran, and Christina Chiel is with us also. She's our volunteer coordinator at the library. Now, the letter is from the White House, and it says, "Congratulations on receiving the President's Volunteer Service Award, and thank you for helping to address the most pressing needs in your community and our country. In my inaugural address, I stated that we need a new era of responsibility, a recognition on the part of every American that we have duties to ourselves, our nation, and the world. These are duties that we do not grudgingly accept, but rather seize gladly, firm in the knowledge that there is nothing so satisfying to the spirit than giving our all to a difficult task. Your volunteer service demonstrates the kind of commitment to your community that moves America a step closer to its great promise. Our nation faces the most challenging economic crisis in a lifetime. We will only renew America if we all work together. Individuals, the private sector, and government must combine efforts to make real and lasting change so that each person has the opportunity to fulfill his or her potential. While government can open more opportunities for us to serve our communities, it is up to each of us to seize those opportunities. Thank you for your devotion to service and for doing all you can to shape a better tomorrow for our great nation, Barack Obama." Thank you, Fran. Fran has donated more than 27,000 hours of service to the Lompoc Library over the past
I just want to thank the library staff and board directors for allowing me the privilege of to help where help is needed because, as you all know, finances aren't that great for library services. And if I can help a little bit, keeps me home, keeps me out of watching the vooptub all day long. So, thank you.
Molly, I'll turn around and get in here. Do we have another proclamation tonight? This is a proclamation regarding National Public Safety Telecommunications Week. Whereas the Congress and the President of the United States have designated April 11th through 17th as National Public Safety Telecommunications Week, and whereas emergencies that occur at any time require the prompt response of police, fire, or medical services, and whereas the professional and dedicated public safety dispatchers of the Lompoc Police Department are the vital link between the citizens or victims and the public safety provider who may save their life or the life of a loved one, may apprehend a criminal, or may save their possessions from theft or fire, and whereas the safety of our police officers and firefighters is dependent upon the quality and the accuracy of information received from citizens who telephone the Lompoc Police Department Communications Center, and whereas the crucial functions performed by these professional telecommunications, telecommunications 24 hours a day, 365 days a year, regularly go unrecognized beyond the scene of an emergency or a critical event, now therefore, I, Michael Semensky, Mayor of the City of Lompoc, California, do hereby call upon the citizens of Lompoc as well as patriotic, civic, and educational organizations to observe National Public Safety Telecommunications Week with appropriate ceremonies and observances to recognize and appreciate the vital role the City of Lompoc Public Safety Dispatchers play in keeping our city safe. And I do proclaim April 11th through 17th as Public Safety Telecommunications Week. I should have, I should have invited Dispatch Supervisor Kim Berry to come up here so I could read this directly to her. I won't read it again. Kim? Congratulations, and I thank you for this.
Thank you.
And if you'd like to say something, and Joyce, it's cheap.
Just thank you. Our dispatchers are great. We have a great group of dedicated dispatchers who provide an indispensable link between the public and the emergency responders, and that goes unnoticed sometimes. So, thank you for the proclamation, and we value the recognition.
Thank you. All you do, thank you. And finally, I'd like to ask Joyce Howard to come forward. Joyce, we have two proclamations. We're doubling up. We're going to get our money's worth out of this next week. The first is a proclamation regarding Sexual Assault Awareness Month. Whereas women, children, and men of all racial, cultural, and economic backgrounds fall victim to sexual assault, with FBI estimates of 1 in 3 women, 1 in 4 girls, and 1 in 6 boys, and 1 in 11 men becoming victims of at least once in their lifetime, the only 1 in 10 women actually report sexual assault. And whereas women, children, and men suffer multiple types of sexual violence, including, but not limited to, stranger rape, acquaintance rape, marital rape, gang rape, serial rape, trafficking, prostitution, pornographic, ritual abuse, sexual harassment, incest, child sexual molestation, and stalking. Can I say all those things here in public? Whereas rape and sexual violence of all kinds continue to occur at an alarming rate, with California having the most reported rape in the United States, and with the American Medical Association stating that a woman is raped every 46 seconds in the United States. And whereas emotional and physical scars resulting from sexual violence are often permanent, and women, children, and men should have the freedom from sexual violence in their homes, in the streets, in their workplace, and in their recreational activities, and whereas a coalition of organizations exists which directly confronts this crisis, including North County Rape Crisis and Child Protection Center, law enforcement agencies, churches, healthcare providers, and volunteers from the community that serve these agencies, who are helping in the effort to end sexual assault. And whereas it is important to recognize the compassion and dedication of the individuals involved in this effort, to applaud their commitment, to increase public understanding of this significant problem, and it is important to recognize the strength, courage, and challenges of the victims, survivors of sexual assault, and their families and friends as they struggle to cope with the reality of rape. I, Michael Semensky, Mayor of the City of Lompoc, do hereby proclaim April 2010 as Sexual Assault Awareness Month, and I've signed this as of today. And a second related proclamation, this is Child Abuse Prevention Month. And whereas child abuse is a serious local, state, and national problem that affects families from all cultural, ethnic, religious, and socioeconomic sectors throughout our state and our nation, and whereas early detection, intervention, and treatment are critical to ending this devastating cycle of child abuse wherein over 3 million American children suffer each year, and whereas only through an effective partnership, including North County Rape Crisis and Child Protection Center, educators, Child Protection Service workers, social agencies, can we continue to provide the necessary programs to serve and protect our children, and whereas through essential prevention and treatment programs and greater coordination among entities delivering services to child abuse victims and their families, volunteers, and professionals are continuing to work together to decrease the incidence of child abuse in Lompoc, and whereas it is important to recognize the compassion and dedication of the individuals involved in this effort, to applaud their commitment and to increase public understanding of the significant problem, and whereas a full month of recognition and activities has been promoted by the North County Rape Crisis and Child Protection Center to increase awareness of child abuse and to create solutions. Now therefore, I, Michael Semensky, Mayor of the City of Lompoc, do hereby proclaim April 2010 as Child Abuse Prevention Month in Lompoc, and I encourage all citizens to participate in the effort to eliminate child abuse from our city. And I have signed this also on the sixth day of April 2010. Joyce, I'd like to present both of you. I'd like to thank you. Thank you for all you do. Yes, Mayor Semensky, City Council, thank you very much.
On behalf of the North County Rape Crisis and Child Protection Center, it's bodies like yours that acknowledge and talk about these issues. You know, it wasn't very many years ago that nobody talked about it. If it was rape, or sexual assault, or child abuse, people did not talk about it. And now, today, the survivors know that there's support in their communities, there's support among their neighbors. If I would have one message to say to you and everyone listening at home, is when you hear about a rape, a sexual assault, or child abuse, don't make a joke, don't laugh. You don't know that the person sitting next to you may have been a survivor, and they're not going to tell you, but inside, it hurts them all over again. It's a very, very serious issue, and I just want to applaud you for taking this step to, to acknowledge it in our community. And by all of us working together, we will live to see the day where children will be free from sexual assault, and men and women will be free from rape. I'd like to tell you about a couple of events coming up, and I expect to see every one of you at these. Currently, at South Side Coffee Shop, there's a display, and some of the displays are by survivors of sexual assault. So go by and get a cup of coffee and, you know, look at some of the artwork. There's a candlelight vigil tonight, but you can't leave and go to that. On Tuesday, the 13th, there's tip and advocate, and volunteers from the Rape Crisis Center and board members will be serving food at Tom's Restaurant. So I encourage you to come by out of pity, if nothing else, and buy hamburger and tip and advocate. And then on April, the 21st, at the Rape Crisis Center, we're having an open house and a drawing. A local artist, Betty Biggs, is donating one of her works. So please come by to see the center and see the services they offer. And again, thank you also very much.
This one is truly worthy, these last two especially truly worthy, well, all of them this evening. They presented a unique challenge for me in that yesterday I picked up a new set of bifocals, and this was my first chance to, to use them, and the words were kind of moving up and down as I read them. But doesn't mean there's any less significance to the words that were spoken. There was a presentation made earlier today. It's not on the agenda, and I think it was the Board of Supervisors, and I think maybe Tony Durham ought to tell us about that one. Councilman Durham, you want to tell us what employee of the what?
Picking on an old man. Well, my, my full-time job right now is I'm a crime prevention specialist for the Santa Barbara County Sheriff's Department. Today, the Board of Supervisors honored myself and the other crime prevention specialists with Employee of the Month. And it was, it was a great honor, but I had to tell the sheriff. I said, "This is really great, Bill. You know, you pat me on the back today, and you're laying me off in two months." Because of the budget, the entire tier that I'm in, in the community involvement program as far as community services, is going to be cut from the Sheriff's Department. And it's, it's not a good thing, but unfortunately, the county's no different than the city when it comes to budget problems. But it was a great honor and a lot of turnout, but thank you, Mayor.
You're welcome, Tony. It was a pleasure to do that to you. Next on the agenda is the City Administrator, the Executive Director's Status Report, and any staff requests and announcements.
Mr. Mayor, Council and Lompoc citizens, I would take this time to advise the City Council a joint meeting with the Planning Commission. It's scheduled for April, April 13th at 6:30 in the council chambers to review Phase 1 of the draft elements of the general fund, I mean, general plan update. I'd also advise that a status report on the code enforcement activities will be agendized for council's review on the meeting of May 4th. Staff will be seeking council's direction regarding proceeding to add to Chapter 10 of the Lompoc Municipal Code, provisions relating to parking of trailers and recreational vehicles. The status report will include the procedures, staffing, and budget to carry out city code enforcement activities. And I would emphasize at this time that in response to concerned citizens, the city has changed our policy to provide confidentiality of citizen, citizen filed code enforcement complaints. And that is all I have tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. That includes any staff requests and announcements?
No further announcements. Thank you.
Next item is the councilman, council or redevelopment agency requests and announcements. Members of the council, Councilwoman Rougey.
I have two, two things, Mayor. The first one is the Wi-Fi update. Ron Stasi gave this to me this evening. We try to keep our citizens informed of what's happening with our Wi-Fi program. Our number of subscribers continues to grow, and we added 69 net new users during the first quarter of 2010. We now have 2/3 of our electric meters equipped for radio read. And I don't know if any of you have noticed around town, they, they come in and put, you know, wires in your electric meters so they can read them, and they're testing them now to ensure accuracy before discontinuing reading in the field. So the workers won't have to go around to every meter and read. They will be able to read them in the staff area. I'm not sure exactly where they're going to read them. Okay. And I also wanted to make a report. At our last meeting, it was suggested about this, the invocations and the wording and so on and so forth, that some of us meet with the Ministerial Association and the Interfaith Alliance. Last Thursday, City Administrator Barcelona, our attorney, Mr. Panoni, myself, and the Mayor Semensky met with five members of those two groups. We talked for about an hour, and I would like to, I think we came to some, some kind of agreement on the wording for the invocation section of our handbook. If we, I know we voted to, on a certain wording on a paragraph on the invocation, and this time I'd, I'd ask if there are at least two other council members that would be agreeable to coming back and changing the wording to add the words "non-sectarian prayer" in the paragraph, if you, to agendize that item for discussion at one of our future meetings. According to our handbook, we have to have, if we want to agendize an item, we have to have at least three council members that would be in agreement to do that. So I'm just going to throw that out there.
Do we have the, the necessary support here to, to put this on the agenda and change the policy at the next?
I'll, I'll vote yes to add those four words suggested. Maybe it'd be added to the consent calendar. We've debated the issue often enough that, that unless there's a lot of people that want to take it off the consent calendar, if we get the additional vote.
I, I have a question. You met with the Ministerial Association, and they, this is a suggestion by them? This is their suggestion? Or a mutual suggestion?
It's a mutual suggestion. We, we had a discussion about it, and that seemed to be an agreeable wording.
Mr. Mayor, I will also second it, but I would not want it on the consent calendar. I'd like to have it discussed at council.
Put it under council requests, and it will be discussed at that time.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Does that conclude? Mr. Lingle, you did have your light on.
Yes, I did. I have a staff request. I've noticed recently at board meetings that I'm a member of or attending board meetings, also recently I attended a, another city council meeting, and it seems like more and more boards and city councils are, instead of having a five-inch binder filled with paper for each of us twice a month, they, we are receiving, or they are receiving their agendas on laptops. There's some advantages to this, and I'd like staff to at least investigate the cost versus value of this. There will be a cost for purchasing these laptops, but I'm assuming, or I'm hoping, that the cost of paper and storage would more than rectify, or be justifying the cost of the laptops. I've only been on the council for a little over a year right now, but I've already gathered enough paper in my filing cabinets that it may become a fire hazard pretty soon. I can even imagine what Mr. Semensky has after 18 years on the council.
I'll show you someday.
Yeah. So, I mean, we're all, we're in the 21st century. Technology has gotten to a point where we can, instead of having this five-inch binder, we can have it on a small chip. I can store years, two years, three years' worth of agendas on a small little chip. It'll be, it'll be a green project. We'll save that, we'll save some storage, and I believe we will save some money. So I'd like to request that staff look at the possible cost savings, or putting laptops, our agendas on laptops. And I'm looking for council support of this recommendation.
Well, I'll, I'll support that. I think we need to look at the cost of it, also the training hours that will have to come into it for some of us.
I'll, I'll support the request to look at it, but I, I have a laptop. Our agenda and our back, all of our information are, is available to download from the web, efficient to the notebook that we're given. And about the only reason that I don't put it on the laptop and bring it in here is that I think we have to modify this table and put in power plugs also to be able to plug them in. My battery life won't go until midnight if, but, but if we can, if we can have that, that looked at. Council, did you have comments on that?
Well, yeah, the issue is that if we use our personal laptops, then it becomes public record. So the cost, that will have to be inquired to the cities anyway. So, I, I mean, I, I understand the proposal. The cost-benefit analysis is going to have to be looked at, and it's not going to be a simple one. a simple one. So, good luck.
Mr. Durham, Mr. Employee of the Month.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I've been busy this last couple of weeks. To begin with, I'd like to start tonight by saying thank you to the community of Lompoc for the support and the kind words to myself and my wife, Sue, upon the passing of her mother, Mary Lou Eddie. And I want to give a very special thanks to the staff here at City Hall for the flowers that they sent and the cards. It's been rough on the family, and your kind words and thoughts have been helpful. On the 23rd of March, the Hope Floats Relay for Life team held a tip for hope at Tom's Hamburger, and they raised a record $1,600 that one night for cancer research. We had a fantastic turnout from the citizens of Lompoc. I can't thank the owners of Tom's Hamburgers enough, you know, for their continued support in the community because Kim and Cotty and their entire staff donated their time and hard, hard-earned hours to support Relay for Life. And I know you've heard me say this before, but that's what makes Lompoc, Lompoc. It's people caring about people and helping people achieve goals. The next item I'd like to speak about, it has nothing to do really with council, however, it does involve a very special citizen in our community. I was pleased to attend the retirement party for a gentleman that has been in this community his entire life, and that was CHP Officer Rowley Griffey. He retired from the California Highway Patrol. Rowley was one of Lompoc High School's quarterbacks. He was, he served in the Marine Corps and reached the rank of captain. He and his Vicki, he and his wife Vicki raised four children here, and during his career with the Highway Patrol, he managed to coach football pretty much the entire CHP career at the high school. So I just want to say congratulations to a man that has served his country and his community with honor and has made a difference to this community and the youth. On Sunday, March 28th, I attended the Vietnam Memorial at Guadalupe. It was a great turnout, representations from the mayor of Guadalupe and Santa Maria, and there were several council members. There was probably about 200 people that were there, and they had a barbecue and a very nice ceremony. Then on Tuesday, March 30th, I had the honor of attending the awards luncheon for Lompoc Police Department. You know, you can't say enough about the men and women that are sworn to protect us here. And I was, you know, we had the City Administrator Laurel Barcelona and also Anne Roger, and Bob Lingle were all there. And it was held at the Four Square Church, and it was truly a great turnout. We actually found out that both captains from the police department can actually cook. So they did a great job on the food. But everyone within the city limits of Lompoc have a very good reason to brag about the professionalism and the dedication that our law enforcement officers and staff have. These men and women every day are willing to lay down their lives to protect ours. So I'm very proud of them. So thank you, Lompoc Police Department. On Wednesday, the 31st, we all remember that the Rotary had their wine tasting here locally, and in fact, they donated $20,000 to the restoration, to help with the restoration of the Vets' Building on South H. I was surprised with an honor. The Rotary, Lompoc Rotary, Rotarians awarded me the Paul Harris Fellow Award, which is an award given to someone that is involved in the community. It was unexpected, but a very pleasant surprise, and Sissies had a great dinner. On April 1st, I attended the New Direction Banquet. It's handled by, I know, I know, we've had a long night. It's been two weeks. Give me a break. So anyway, Mr. Dale Willis is the director of the New Direction Banquet, I mean, New Direction Group, and it deals with young adults, well, adults period, with alcohol or drug addiction. They have done a fantastic job with working with the youth and the victory outreach in our community. Sheriff Bill Brown was one of the guest speakers, and in fact, Captain Larry Ralston from the Lompoc Police Department is on the board to ensure that we are behind this program. I think it's a fantastic chance for us to be able to help adults, young and old, find the help that they need. Finally, I was waiting for Mr. Lingle to give an applaud. Finally, today, at the Lompoc Park and Recs, they call it Day Camp. What it is, we had 41 students in the community that are going to be looking for jobs this summer. Joanne Plummer did an outstanding job of putting this together. It runs from today through Friday, and by the way, they're looking for people to help out from 2:00 to 4:00. Anyway, but we had 41 students there today, and the idea is that they fill out an application. We review it. We give them suggestions and ideas on how to make the application better for them. In other words, sell the product. You know, you want to brag about, this is your chance to brag about you. Let us, let the employer know what you have to offer. But all in all, it's been a roller coaster two weeks. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Martin.
I'll be brief, Mr. Mayor. I will only talk about one event. I volunteered at the Empty Balls at the Vets' Building, a wonderful event that the Food Bank holds here in Lompoc every year. There were over 300 fundraisers that came in and picked their bowl, made by local artists, and had soup. A very wonderful event. Please plan to attend next year. Very worthy cause to provide food for the Food Bank in the Santa Barbara County. Thank you.
Thank you. I have just one comment also. I want to commend the Parks and Recreation Department and the Kiwanis for the Easter Egg Hunt last Saturday. Weather cooperated very well, a lot of very happy kids with the program out at River Park. Next item on the agenda is oral communications. This is a time when you, the public, can talk to us, tell us what, on any topic you'd like relative to city business. We invite you to come forward. If you haven't filled out a card, please fill one out and hand it to the city clerk, and you have five minutes. Watch the lights.
Good evening, council members. I'm speaking today on the opposition of the Off-Highway Vehicle Grant.
Excuse me, let me interrupt for just a second. If there's an item on the agenda later on, you will be given also, you will be given the opportunity at that time to speak. And most people like to hold their comments to speak on the item because it's more relative when we're going to hear that item right now. But you can speak now if you can't wait till, wait here or, okay, thank you. Is there anyone who'd like to speak on, again, any item, but if it's an item on the agenda later on, you will be given an opportunity at that time to speak on it also?
John Lynn, City of Lompoc, just two things I'd like to ask the council for some help on. I was downtown again this last weekend, and there was a sea of trash blown in from the swap meet, and a week ago, I talked to the cleanup crew from the city that cleans up down there every Monday, and they commented about how much harder it is to clean up on Monday because that's the direction the wind blows. Perhaps we could chat with the swap meet folks about a little better cleanup. And number two, somebody pointed out to Tony and I the other night, or the other day we were talking, that we have two merchants here in Lompoc who do not have their spray paint cans under lock and key. And after, after we talked to that lady, I went around and checked everywhere else. Lompoc Ace Hardware, Moore Mill, Valley Welding, Michaels, all have their spray paint cans locked up. Unfortunately, neither Home Depot nor Walmart do, which appeared to me to not be the spirit of the law. And as I was cleaning spray paint off a city electric box again today, it occurred to me that I hadn't asked the council for some help in that regard. But perhaps we can make an effort to enforce the laws that are in place, and if anybody knows who that little sucker is with the orange spray paint, I'll give him $100 cash to get me a picture of him.
Can I respond to that?
Thank you, Mr. Lynn.
Can I respond to that?
Mr. Lynn, just for your information, the Lompoc Police Department did go around the city to numerous departments, and as far as Home Depot is concerned, they had it in the cage, but they didn't have it closed when the police department were there. So they gave them the information, they also gave Walmart the information, and we hope to have compliance in a very short amount of time.
Arlen Seacrest, good evening, Mayor, City Council. I come to you tonight to speak about weeds in the community and pampas grass. And for your information, if you haven't, don't know what pampas grass is, it's that stuff that's growing all over Vandenberg and out in the village between the shopping center and the banks. It's completely out of control out there in the village. It's approaching into the, oh, that part of the property out there that's set aside for, can't think of the name of the, or the plants that are in there. But anyway, you can't go in there with motorized equipment or sprays to take it out. And pampas grass, for your information, is the one that's going down there in the ditch behind Ace Hardware and Napa Auto Parts. It's been out of control forever. And it's also in the hills above the dump on our property. And to go in and take that out, you have to dig it out of there, which is going to be kind of treacherous. Then the other thing is, like down at my shop on Ocean Avenue in the 1000 block and the 1200 block there by Vaughn's, you've got Melba up this high and other weeds in there. And I understand here in the future, you're going to notify all those people, they need to get rid of that. Well, what they're going to do is mow it. Now that, all that does is spread it all over the community. I suggest that we have them disc it under. That will help kill the gopher population off in the community. The first 10 years we were down there, that property around us was farmed. After that, we started getting gophers out of it. So I'd like you to consider that in the notification, that those bigger pieces are disced or plowed and taking care of that, just like over here in the corner at H and Ocean. Now they're pulling all that stuff rather than weed whacking it, because when they weed whack it, they just spread it over here in the city grass and everybody else's. And as we know in Lompoc, the wind blows all directions, so you can't get away from it. Thank you.
Mayor, Council, and Dwayne Homedahl, I'm here to sort of follow up with Arlen, what he had to say. The one thing that nobody brought up at the council tonight, it's one of the biggest events coming to Lompoc in a long time, is the 17th of April. You've got 130 wineries out there, and you're going to have about 3,500 people coming to Lompoc. You've got the annual Wine Festival coming in here. So part of the reason I'm talking about it is that the corner of H and Ocean is a weedy mess, and you've got people coming to town. I think there's, what I've understood, and after I went back and did some research on it, our idea of sending a notice out to get the grass knocked down is so it looks nice for the Flower Festival, which is latter part of June. But we've got a lot of weeds out there now. We may want to go back and look at that notification and bring it in sooner. Looks like the festival's going to be here for a long time. When you've got that many people coming to town, they're going to look the town, and you've got a corner of town that looks like a weed mess. And I don't know, the owners, I don't know if they can't get off their rear and get it done. I don't know why. But I think it's got to look better. The owners of these other big lots in town are the same way. They should have some respect for the town and for their property. What Arlen is saying is right. If you go out there and wait till now, most everybody wants to go to seed, and if it goes to seed, then it may not come back, except if it spreads the seed out. Somehow, if we can work out a way to get them to cut it earlier. Other communities work with them. They have them cut maybe two or three times. When you have a rainy year that we had this year, the grass is growing faster. So there's got to be some thought, and I tried to do it when I was on the council, couldn't get anywhere going. But we've got to look at, start cutting the weeds earlier, get rid of them, because when you have grass this high and you go in there and mow it, you've got that much overburden left. And to follow up on the pampas grass, by the county's regulation, the county's notice, pampas grass is a noxious weed. And if you do a reclamation plan on your ranch, you've got to get rid of every one of the pampas grass before they'll sign off on a reclamation plan. And that's what happened with our ranch. So, and you can spray and kill it. It's better to take it out, but you can spray. Thank you.
Mr. Homedahl, does anyone else like to speak at this time? Steve, no one rise, we'll close oral communications, bring you back to the council. I think it would be appropriate for us to have a briefing soon on the weed program. If the rest of the council agrees, we could have it on an agenda soon, both with the idea of understanding fully what we have now and accepting recommendations for further study or looking at the program for modification.
Mr. Mayor, I would like to support that. In fact, I would like to see if we can have it as an agenda item to deal with the weed issues and see if it actually can be, you know, looked into, the possibility of having taken care sooner than the Flower Festival. So I'd like to make the formal request that it goes as an agenda item. I'll need two other council members.
I will also support Mayor Saminsky's suggestion, and I will also support Mayor Martin, Councilwoman Martin's suggestion of bringing it back also.
I too support that. We've been talking about weed abatement for a long time, and I think the idea is to cut, start going after the weeds earlier in the year is a good idea, too, so.
Thank you. The next item on the agenda is the consent calendar. We have three items listed. They're considered routine. They'll be dealt with with one motion. What are the wishes of the council?
I'd like to make a motion that we approve the consent calendar.
Moved. Seconded. Let's cast our votes. The next item on the agenda is an appointment. Oversight Committee for the Park Maintenance and Pool Assessment District, one unexpired term that extends to January of next year. We have an application in the package. Pardon, pardon. I, I'm sorry, did you say something?
I'm going to.
What are the wishes of the council?
I would like to nominate Ralph Harmon to, I don't know why he's taking on this job, but after working with him on Planning Commission for so many years. But I think he'd be really good on this, the Oversight Committee for the Park Maintenance and Pool Assessment District. So I would like to nominate Ralph.
I'll second that nomination.
We're second. Ralph, would you like to say anything at this time? No. Okay. We have a nomination, and we have a second, the only one before us. Let's vote. And that nomination, congratulations, Ralph Harmon. Our next item is a public hearing. The item has been continued from March 2nd meeting, and the applicant has requested an additional continuance. By continuing it, we don't have to notice, is that correct? Further continuation, we don't have to go out with the additional public notices?
No. Through the mayor, what will happen is, because there's not going to be a date certain, the applicant is going to have to pay for the re-noticing. And they've requested the continuance, and they understand that.
That will not take any action or motion on part of the council, then?
I would suggest that you do have a motion to continue it, but just not to a date certain, just continue the public hearing.
All right. Can we have a motion to continue?
I still move that we continue it. I second.
Move and second. Any discussion? None. Let's vote. And that passes. Do the other lights work up there? New business tonight, an ordinance amending the procurement code to adjust sealed bid thresholds, to improve bid and protest procedures for purchasing in public works, and to delegate authority to the city administrator to award contracts up to authority to the city administrator to award contracts up to $125,000. Mr. Ambler.
Good evening, Mayor Samenski, members of the city council. The city code Purchasing Section outlines methods and procedures for obtaining goods, services, and public works needed for city functions. Periodically, it's necessary to update the code to meet the changing times. The last update was in 2002, and the time has come for a few additional changes. The changes fall into five general areas outlined in the ordinance. We'll talk about updating the sealed bid and award thresholds. We add to the methods of official public notice. We clarify the authorized cooperative purchasing procedures. And we clarify the proposal negotiation methods that are appropriate. And finally, we revise the bid protest procedure. On the topic of changing award thresholds, as inflation affects the prices of goods and services, procedural requirements for buying a piece of equipment become greater year after year for items that formally require the informal quotes and award by the city manager. Inflated prices require sealed bids and council agenda action. A sealed bid process can take 60 days to specify, advertise, solicit, evaluate, and seek award by council. Compounding inflation in the economy means that a formal sealed solicitation is required for increasingly smaller inflated value purchases. Inflation adjusting procurement thresholds periodically means effectively using the same solicitation methods for equivalent purchases over time. Purchasing award levels for goods, public works, and professional services are best set at the same level so that everybody can understand what the level should be. If there's a different level for each one, it makes it more confusing, more difficult to understand. It's a good practice to keep those levels understandable. Within the city, when the city uses less formal methods, the city typically gets multiple quotes and competitive pricing as much as we can from the market. When there is time and probable advantage, the city will still use the sealed bid methods. The changes here move the mandatory sealed bid and council award thresholds to $125,000 for public works, for goods and services, and for professional services. The changes also move the informal bid requirement threshold to $30,000 from 20,000, 25,000. On the topic of public notion, notice, the ordinance section two, this change updates the official methods of public notice to include email, fax, and U.S. mail. Changes in society may make flexibility on the, an advantage to the city for using these new forms of public notice. On the topic of cooperative purchasing, this change in the code expressly authorizes the use of some methods of cooperative purchasing that may not have been clearly covered in the past. Current code authorizes the city to enter into an agreement in cooperation with another local, county, state, or federal public entity. Many current cooperative purchasing opportunities, such as the State of California Master Agreements, the Western States Contracting Alliance, and organization of state purchasing organizations that make contracts available, and U.S. communities are usually not such agreements with another public entity. They are competitively awarded by an agency who gains agreement from the contractor to extend the prices, terms, and conditions to another public agency. We have no direct agreement with the lead agency, but take advantage of their contract with the vendor. We use these for purchases when it is in the city's interest for patrol cars, trucks, and transit vehicles. This change will clearly authorize these methods. On the topic of professional proposal negotiation, ordinance section eight says the city will negotiate with all offers who have a reasonable chance of selection. We changed the word will to may, negotiate with all offers who have a reasonable chance of selection. This change gives city staff flexibility of negotiating methods. Sometimes, there may be 15 or more proposals submitted, and negotiating with that many proposers, or even half of them all at the same time, can be confusing and inefficient process. More efficient process, most times, will be to negotiate with the highest rated proposer, and if no agreement can be reached, then negotiate with the next best. On the topic of the protest policy, the city has a protest policy that outlines an administrative method to protest the procurement. The current protest policy allows protest after the award. When we ask council to approve an award, under the current code, the clock starts at award, and interested parties have seven days to protest the council action. This is a messy process, and at the time of award, POs and contracts are prepared for the vendor. And when an interested party still has the right to protest, that may cancel or void the award. The answer is a two-stage change. The new code, section 3 dot 36 dot 165, requires a notice of intent to award in the form of a letter sent to all interested parties announcing the intended award, the time allowed, and how to get a copy of the city code protest procedure. City code 3 dot 36 dot 170, the change, changes the protest process to have a pre-bid protest before the bid acceptance or opening date, when the interested party may challenge the specification or the bid process. There's also a post-bid protest after the bid opening and after the intent to award, when interested parties may challenge the award. This section gives one week to protest after the notice of intent is sent to them. This section outlines the grounds for protest, what may must be in a protest, who to deliver the protest to, and how to appeal to an administrative hearing. Please approve the changes requested in the ordinance, and this concludes my presentation. I'm available for questions.
Are there any questions of Mr. Ambler at this time, or you want to hold them until after public comment? Let's open this up for the public to comment on the changes in our purchasing procedures. And Ray, stand by. No one rise? No one raising any questions? We'll ask Mr. Ambler to come back up. Are there any questions of the members of the council?
Mr. Ambler, in these tough economic times, how would you argue that we become less restrictive in our awards by the council here, and giving more authority to the purchasing department, and not being more restrictive? I mean, these are tough times. We should be, in my thought, way of thinking, we should actually be more conservative and be looking at every penny spent in a more strict fashion, and awarding, giving more leniency to these awards. How would you argue that, or what would you say to that?
What I say is that this simply defines the level at which council authority means that these things have to be brought back to you, and even if it's not $125,000, if it's $100,000, we're going to get quotes, and informal bid process takes place, both in purchasing and in the Public Works Department. And the competition is nearly as much, and it just doesn't have what takes the procurement process 50 or 60 days to complete from start to finish.
I guess my concern would be, even though it's only additional $25,000 that we're granting from $100,000 to $125,000, this $125,000 item may be something that the council sitting here would want to say, we can hold off on for six months, a year, until times get better. And instead of just authorizing you immediately to spend that $125,000, that's where I'm coming from. I think we, as a council, we have a fiduciary responsibility to be looking at things even a little bit tighter right now during these times.
I guess I would point out that all of these things are already in the budget, and the council would have approved them already at this point, and that it, I'm not sure if, would a second pass at it be good for you? Is that appropriate?
I think a lot of these things come to us, even on the consent calendar, at least we have a chance to look at it. And just because they're in the budget right now, that doesn't mean that they're automatically going to be approved. I mean, if the economy doesn't turn around, the, you mentioned the Crown Victoria, you know, has increased in price. We may decide to hold off on a new vehicle for one year, even though it's, we've said that with the life expectancy is three to five years. During the next several years, we may say that we need to get five to seven years out of our vehicles instead of three to five. So they will, they will come to the council, may not as an agenda item, but may, they may come as a consent calendar, but at least we have an opportunity to look at it. So I'll admit that I'm a little concerned about increasing this amount at this time.
Ms. Martin?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I think the argument that is being made here of why to increase it is because the purchasing power of our dollar has gone down. Am I correct on that? I mean, there is an argument being made here, and there is this graph that says purchasing power in 2002 versus today. So is there some logic there saying, well, $100,000 doesn't buy as much as it used to, therefore, we can raise it to $125,000? Am I reading this wrong? I mean, I want to understand your argument. So is that correct, or no?
And the things that you could buy in 2002 are reduced by about 20% since then, and so that means that the same thing that I could buy without going to council for approval now requires council approval.
Correct. Okay. So that is your argument. Your argument is that basically, the net worth or the amount of money that you are being given the liberty to use is effectively the same, just simply because of inflation.
Right.
Is that right? I just want to make sure that I know what the argument is. I do understand Councilmember Lingal, the concern that, you know, the dollars are tight and so forth, but that's a different argument of what is being made here, which is just based on the value of the dollar. Council staff has, the same authority as it had before, it's just that the value of the dollar is less today.
Mr. Bean, I think, the way you're bobbing there, I thought.
Raising my hand. I'd like to comment as well on this. Part of the code that we're changing on these dollar values, they're also the method that we go out to procure a project. The numbers that we're asking to put in the code, we wanted those in there nearly two years ago. The city has adopted what's known as the Uniform Cost Accounting Act. That's what allows us to go out and have our city workers do certain amount, level of work without even bidding it, right? That was $25,000. It's been upped in the state code to $30,000. The informal bid process, where we just go out and ask three companies, what would you charge us to do that work, and have a very, very minimal amount of specs, a very short bidding time, something you want to get done in a hurry, that limit's always been $100,000. The state's raised it to 125. That's why the numbers are in there at 30 and 125,000. It isn't necessarily just about what we can have the city administrator sign for, it's about the process that we go out and procure this work. So now, if you pass this, we can have our street crew do a $30,000 job without bidding And that's why we ask you to up those limits. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Bean. No other comments or questions from council? I have a couple of them. Section seven, notice of solicitation. You said, notice of a request for proposal shall be published at least 10 calendar days prior to the date of the proposal opening or proposal receipt. And I presume that's so that if somebody that didn't originally get solicited would have a chance to come forward, get copies of the specs, and respond with a proposal?
Yes.
That seems like a very short period of time. By the time the person reads it, if it's 10 calendar days and you've got weekends in there, he could be, a contractor could be coming in and asking for specs and being told that he's got to have a proposal in here in two or three days for bid opening. Is that, is that a reasonable period of time on that? Is that ever caused a problem?
I'm not aware that it's ever caused a problem, but that's the way the code currently is before any changes. The only thing that we've added is, is the, on the third line down, it says mail, email, or fax, and that's text that we've added. I think that for informal.
This is for informal bids. This is not for the bids over 100.
Informal bids?
Okay.
That.
This is for the, for the smaller, non-complex items. Is that what you're telling?
Right.
I seem to remember one exception, and I want to see if I'm still clear with this. Maybe there are others. We have something like a million-dollar authority that we've given for, to both the city administrator, or maybe even more than that, $5 million authority, to, and to the utilities director for the purchase of electricity. Isn't that correct? It has to be purchased on the spot market, and when there's, when there's a need and the prices are available.
That's something that I'm aware of. He went out.
He went out, okay.
Coming back now.
On a dead run, too, I'll bet.
Mayor Samenski?
Yes.
While we're waiting for him, those items that are utility-specific, I believe, are addressed as a agreement between us and the NCPA agency for those specific types of purchases.
Oh, okay.
And they're outside the realm of the typical purchasing agent process we do here in the city.
Okay. I just was wondering if there might be other exceptions that are, in addition to that one, but I can ask those, that question later. All of the requests for proposal that we would be issuing would be for, as you indicated, for budgeted items.
Yes.
And we would approve the budget. Where, if something is needed and it's under budget, do we see the amendment to the budget, the request for a transfer of money, or something that would, that would allow us to see that, that project before the bid time? If something comes up that's not in, not in the budget?
If the item is not in the budget.
Right.
The item would come to council for approval to do that budget adjustment.
Okay.
To add it to the budget, and then to authorize the securing of that particular product or service.
I think with respect to Mr. Lingal's comment, I would much prefer that the council review the items at budget time, or at the time we appropriate the money, than, as opposed to waiting until all the specs are prepared, the requests for proposals are prepared, and then we get involved. I would suggest that, that the uniform procedures, you know, there was, there was an old saying that I remember quoted half a dozen times out on the base when we were talking about the detailed procedures that were approved, and that was, that if, if. talking about the detailed procedures that were approved, and that was, that if, if you want to ensure that the lawn is mowed to exactly one inch, you can take a ruler and go out on every lawn and you can measure it, or you can take a ruler once and you can measure the lawnmower, and then trust the people pushing the lawnmower to, to cut the lawns up to one inch and not have to, not have to get involved each, each time. And I think, I think that we approve the projects at the time of budget issuance, and I have no, no problem with the, with the item before us, but I'll ask if there's any, any further comments or, or wishes of the council?
Just have just one additional comment. I appreciate Ms. Martin's clarification on the value of the dollar. I just want to point out that the three items that were presented there, it was the increase in diesel fuel, increase in copper, and Crown Victoria. I could give you three right now where the, the buy, the value of the dollar has increased. Price of property, price of gasoline, was that long ago we were paying $5 a gallon for gasoline, now we're at $3 a gallon. Trades in construction, we're getting a much better value for a dollar in trades in construction. So the three items that were listed here, I believe were listed there for a reason, to make a point, and it was a good point. But there are probably as many items that we could list that the value of the dollar is greater, purchasing power, than being decreased.
Thank you. What are the wishes of the council of the item before us?
I would like to make a motion if the council is ready.
Yes, sir.
I will move that the city council introduce ordinance 1563, 3.303041702030050060 of adding section 33161 to the Lompoc municipal code.
I'll second that.
We have motion. Anyone like to speak for or against the, the motion? Let's cast our votes. That motion is approved, four to one. Next item on the agenda is the water treatment plant pipeline pigging. Who's the pig? Ray?
This request is for pipeline pigging for the water treatment division. Pipes in some homes have been known to have deposits and sedimentation that make the opening in the pipe narrower over the deckades. Transport pipes in the city also are narrowed in the same manner. They're able to carry less water and require more pumping energy effort over time. Cleaning out the pipes can make them carry more water and require less pumping energy and be more efficient. The biggest concern for this was to make sure that we selected qualified contractors that had verifiable experience and success in this contracting specialty. With little experience and no good way to estimate what the cost would be, so we required bidding priced by the foot for several diameters and types of line. Those advertised in the Lompoc records, bids were set to the contractors' plan rooms across the state and emailed to city email bid announcement list. The prices were to be submitted on a separate sealed envelope, and the references and experience were to be first evaluated. Then the prices would be compared for all qualified bidders. There were seven attendees at the pre-bid conference. We had two bidders that actually bid, and the department and the buyer determined all of them, both of them, to be qualified. The list of pipe that we asked for pricing on was about 14,000 feet of various line sizes from eight to 24-inch. The two bids that we got were from V. Lopez &amp; Son for $379,000 and for ARB Incorporated for $477,000. This exceeded the budget amount of $171,000. The department reconsidered what they planned to do, prioritized and reduced the work to do only the highest priority at the budget price. So now the project we ask you to approve is for the budgeted amount of $171,000, and this will be the highest priority transport line that the city has. I don't know, I just have two pictures that may illustrate what pipeline pigs look like as they go through the line, and some of them have, like, scratch wool and stuff, then it scratches the inside of the pipe and cleans it out, and it's a new, it's a new process, I think, for our water department. It has a lot of possibility to be able to make pumping through those lines more efficient. And that concludes my report, and if you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer if I can. Otherwise, I think Ron's here and probably knows a lot more than I do about it.
Ms. Martin.
Okay. You're talking about doing this within the city property, the, the street, the, the water pipes that are going into residential homes, but they're in the streets, right? I mean, how far does it go? My question is, does this go to somebody's home, and, or that's something that the, the owner might have to deal with at one point in time because their pipes are old? So I, I'd just like to get an understanding.
I'm not aware, I'm not aware of exactly the pipes, but I think that we've selected ones from the wells and ones from the reservoir area where it's coming to the water plant. I think that's what we're doing first because of the prioritizing, and that's where the greatest potential savings in energy and, and.
So it doesn't extend to the whole city network?
That's, that's my belief.
Right?
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, the pipes that will be pigged are the larger ones on the backbone system that you find in the street. I think Ray mentioned that the smallest were probably eight-inch and the largest up to the 24-inch. And the service lines that go to the homes tend to be one-inch or three-quarter inch, sometimes half-inch. So we don't get near any of the service levels, properties. It's strictly in the major thoroughfares and those facilities that connect the wells to the pumps to the plant itself.
Okay. So as you gave me a little bit, this is to improve in efficiency from the wells to the plant, now from the plant to the home?
Well, some are from the plant to the wells because as you leave the plant, either with the lines, there are the larger lines in those areas, and there's also large lines in the streets where the service is greatest. And as you fan out from the plant, whether it's a collection system or a delivery system, you have the smaller-sized pipes. So it's, it's designed just like our electric system and sewer system, where you have to move the most product. That's where you have the largest pipe, and that's generally not at the user level.
Okay.
Ms. Roger.
Yeah, I finally know what pigging is now. That's wonderful. I wanted to commend the water treatment plant workers for realizing that the $379,000 was more than we can afford to spend and for prioritizing the lines that are the most important ones that need to be cleaned out. I think that that's, was really a good idea, and I really thank the, the staff for, for doing that work and deciding to, you know, to save us money. So I think that was really a good job.
Mr. Lingle.
I have a question, either for Ray or Ron. First of all, I approve this project. I think it's necessary when you start looking at, at the inside of pumps or pipes. My question is, as these are going through the pipes, they're getting rid of debris and matter and making, you know, for the sake of an argument, it's sort of like a colonoscopy, making a clear path. So, anyway, that's my medical background. Okay. So anyway, as it's going through, is it going to leave any deposits that the citizens should be worried about? Are these, as it's cleaning the pipe, are these, are the residue, is it going to be flushed into the, the residents? Are we, as a resident, are we going to have to worry about that coming into our system, plugging up our possible filtering system? What's happening with that?
So I believe that, once again, I'm not an expert at this, but I believe that they open a pipe section at both ends, and they put this pig in there, and it's pushed through by the water pressure behind it. And out the other section is an opening and debris and stuff. You can see pictures of them on some websites where the stuff comes out and it's completely flushed out of the line.
I don't know a whole lot more than you, but I'm sitting with one of our water engineers, and we were discussing it, and we have an answer for you. We push the debris toward the plant, and then any debris that's picked up from the cleansing process is at the plant. It's removed, taken off-site and stored, and from the perspective of the user, they don't see it happening because it's, it's starting at the delivery end and moving back toward the source end.
Okay. Thank you.
Ron? Wait just a second. Any other question? I have a question, similar to the one that Councilman Roger asked, but you originally had a plan for a certain number of pipes that needed to be cleaned. Based on the bids coming in more than double what we expected, you've probably, it, it looks like you've cut the number of pipes to be cleaned in half. And, and then are awarding that contract just with a priority? Now, how, how much risk, how bad a shape are the other pipes in? And should we, do we run, if, if, if it was an increased use of power, if it was a decrease in the efficiency of the pipes, should we be making a decision regarding the, the second half of the requirement?
We will. As you may notice in the staff report, it said, this is something we haven't done before. So we didn't have an idea of what it would cost. We took all the pipes that we thought would benefit from the project, put them into the bid documents, and found out that it was much more costly than our budget. So we went back and picked the pipes that we feel were older or most in need of attention or had the, the longest push to move the water. And based upon what we learned from this pigging operation, we'll know whether to go with a second phase to pick up the additional pipes, or we might find that the pipes are relatively clear and it's no need to take this to an additional step.
We all know how clean the water is that we bring up from our wells. It shouldn't be.
It is clean and it gets additional treatment. And so, with, just on that note, you know, when the river comes into town, that's where we concentrate our pumping because we've learned the water there is less salty and has less total dissolved solids. But in the plant, we also then treat it again to reduce them to good quality that you find when you smell or taste the water.
Okay. Thank you. At this time, I'm going to open it up for, for public comment. If there's any comments from the public on the item before us, we invite you to speak now. Looks like no one rising. We'll bring you back to the council. What are the wishes of the council on this item?
Mr. Mayor, I move approval of the recommendation that the city council approve the award of a contract for pipeline pigging to V. Lopez &amp; Son Incorporated for $171,000 and authorize the purchasing of materials manager to issue a purchase order.
Can we have a motion?
I second the motion, Mayor.
And a second to the motion? Is there any other discussion in the council? Seeing none, let's cast our votes. Thank you. Okay. Bringing the council meeting back to order. Our, our next item, item eight on the agenda, is an application, approval for California Department of Parks and Recreation Off-Highway Vehicle Grant Resolution. Police Chief Tim Dabney.
I thought about running the other way. I thought all these people were here for the line pigging item on the agenda. Mayor, City Council, members of Lompoc community, the staff report I have before you and the proposal I have before you is a continuing effort of the department to avail ourselves of resources to do our job. Over the course, I've been in Lompoc for 14 years now, and over the course of that time, the issue of the riverbed and enforcement in the riverbed has always been somewhere on the radar in terms of enforcement. Various methods have been employed for that type of enforcement, which include things like, the park rangers used to patrol the riverbed until some of their vehicles got stuck in the riverbed. Of course, their vehicles are not as good as their vehicles, which is part of what brings me here because this grant does allow us to get a vehicle that will catch their vehicles. We do have to keep order, okay? Some other methods that we've used in the past in, in terms of prevention and enforcement, we've, we've put up no trespassing signs. The city has put up no trespassing signs along the riverbed. More recently, when the multipurpose bike pedestrian path was constructed along the, the edge of the riverbed on the city side of the riverbed, you know, that was quite an expense for the city to put that in. And during that process, it was debated at length whether or not to build a fence to protect that, that multipurpose path. Currently, there is city ordinance that makes it illegal to drive a motorized vehicle across or down that path, and park rangers and police officers, as they have time available, do enforce that law. Some other things that have been done in the past with regard to prevention and enforcement in the riverbed includes the, the placement of K-rails, which are big concrete blocks in certain areas where off-road vehicles would access the riverbed. We've held community meetings with some of the residents that live in, over the, over the course of years in that area, and we've held educational meetings, and we've put it on the Lompoc Police Beat Television Show, along with talking with the California State Park Police Personnel and gotten their take on the issue because they deal with the same issue in other jurisdictions of our state. You know, when we do get involved in, currently, as we can, as resources avail ourselves, we do try to do preventative patrols in the area, but we're pretty much restricted to streetside and not getting down into the riverbed. But those resources are limited, and generally, we are responding to calls for service when some resident that lives along the riverbed is being disturbed by off-road activities or, not just off-roaders either. It's, sometimes there are parties down in the riverbed that, that result in, you know, some criminal acts that occur. Sometimes there are sexual assaults that occur in the riverbed and, excuse me? There are sexual assaults that have occurred in the riverbed that we've had documented and, you know, other issues that occur down in the riverbed. The fact of the matter is, is that state law and state regulations with regard to the, the waterway in the riverbed is what has put the, the city in its current posture. I remember many times hearing Councilmember Skyler talk about the days when the mud bog was down in the riverbed, and state law with regard to the ecology of the environment has restricted the access to the riverbed. In addition to that, there is a county ordinance that, that restricts access to the riverbed by off-road vehicles, as well as. by off-road vehicles, as well as the aforementioned city ordinances with regard to the multipurpose trail. What brings me for you, before you tonight is an opportunity that we became aware of a few, couple of months ago, wherein the State Department of Parks and Recreation provides grants to various jurisdictions throughout the state to do enforcement, to do education, to direct off-roaders to areas, other areas where it's legal for them to ride and, as well as enforcement. So, we have, we intend to apply for this grant. This grant is, requires a 25% match and as you see by the budget presentation on page three, is that we've elected to list the in-kind 25% match, not making it a hard cash, cash match. And as you'll notice, the, the amount of the in-kind match far exceeds the $30,000 that would be the 25% of the grant amount. And the reason for that is, is that some of the estimations on the in-kind matches are not, are not solid in terms of, for instance, potentially 180 hours of court time for citations that may be issued in the riverbed. There's no way to predict that. Could be more, could be less. So, because of these variances in things like the court time, the fuel and maintenance costs of the off-road vehicle that we'd be using, the printing of materials and signage, the emergency medical services supplies and the automatic defibrillator that would be equipped on, on the, on the vehicle that we'd be using, some of those things and the training for the park rangers on the, on the, the street side. The thinking would be that they would be trained in bicycle operations as well as operating the off-road vehicle and, as well as the police department. So, those costs are not fixed. So, for the purposes of the grant, we exceeded the 25% because it is an in-kind match and we will not be asking for any general fund expenditures with regard to this application. What this grant provides essentially is one off-road vehicle fully equipped to conduct patrols in the riverbed. It will also pay for 180 hours of patrol time for two park rangers and two police officers, 180 hours per month for a total of 2,160 hours per year. And that's not every day of the, every day of the year. That would be sporadically as, as problems were identified and they'd be on a schedule. I think it works out to something like three weekends, Friday, Saturday, Sunday, a month. Or if you have times where there is a particular problem or the residents in that area are, are having particular problems, then that schedule can be adjusted. So, the recommendation before you this evening is that you adopt this resolution approving the grant application submitted by the Lompoc Police Department to the California Department of Parks and Recreation in the amount of $176,595 to enhance public education, crime prevention, enforcement of laws related to off-road, off-highway vehicle use on the city of Lompoc Riverbed, multipurpose bike trail and other city property in the San Unis Riverbed. And lastly, the last part of the recommendation is that if you approve this resolution, it will authorize the city administrator or myself or my designate to accept and administer the grant should it be awarded. Now, one question that was asked prior to this meeting was, if it's awarded in year one and it's not awarded in year two, what happens? Well, there is no requirement under the grant that we maintain these positions or the, the amount of hours in terms of enforcement. So, if, if we are granted in year one and not in year two, then we would have, the equipment would certainly not go away, but we would adjust with the resources that we have available, being park rangers of the Parks and Recreation Department or police officers, as we could to enforce the law and use the equipment that the grant provided. And that concludes my report. I'm available for any questions that you might have or you might have.
Questions at this time? Ann?
So, basically, the riverbed is, it's illegal to ride down there.
Yes.
According to state law and our ordinance.
And county ordinance.
And county ordinance.
Correct.
So, it's illegal.
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Durham?
Chief Dabney, on, on page three, where it says, "Program Supervisor, 192 hours or 9.5 of a full time."
Correct.
Would that be handled by the watch sergeant or watch officer?
We would designate one of our supervisors to oversee the grant and to supervise the program, both from the Parks and Recreation personnel that are assigned to whatever team that would go out on a weekend and the officers that are assigned to patrol. So, it's essentially, when you write a grant, matching grant of this type, it's very similar to our domestic violence grant where, wherein a portion of the captain's time for administration of the grant is taken as an in-kind match and a portion of the supervisor's time is taken because they do spend time overseeing the grant.
Correct.
And although the city's not actually spending money, additional money, a part of that person's time is spent on this particular project. And this type of grant allows for that type of matching. So, as you see, the program supervisor, we are estimating and we would have to track for the state purposes, 9.5% of the supervisor's time would be dedicated to this grant. And then 3% of administrative overhead from the Parks and Recreation Department, from one of their staff people, and then 3% of one of our administrative staff at the police department are factored into the grant as an in-kind match.
Thank you. And also, when you talk about the educational factor.
Yes.
Now, were you talking about you were actually contacting the citizens of Lompoc or educational factor with the officers? In other words, educating the, you know, were you working with?
Under the grant?
Under the grant. Would it be?
Under the grant. There's a piece of, in, in the, in the program that we've put together, there's a piece of education for the public, that we would be handing out flyers down along the riverbed to anybody who would make access, showing them the, the areas of the central coast where they could ride their off-road vehicles, educating them as to what the law is and what, you know, the, in terms of the ecology and what, what the off-roading does to the ecology down there and what the state mandate is with regard to the, the waterway.
Okay, thank you.
Ms. Martin?
Thank you, Mayor. I have three questions for you.
Yes.
The first one is, are you aware of anything that the county may be doing on this matter regarding applying for grants or so? Because I understand part of this land is owned by the county, correct?
Correct.
Are you aware of any, any?
I don't know that the, the sheriff's department or any other department of the county is applying for this money under this grant. I know that there was a period of time where they had a designated unit. I think they had two or three deputies that were on quad runners and they were enforcing the various waterways throughout the county. But Lompoc, occasionally, we would get them come to Lompoc, but they were enforcing waterways all over the county.
Okay. The second question is regarding the specifics of the grant, which would be to enforce the law, the present law that exists.
Yes, ma'am.
What happens to the violations? Is it a fine? Is there, I, I just want to know a little bit of specifics. What does it mean exactly to enforce the law?
Well, it depends on which, which law. If it's, if it's county ordinance and, and a person is stopped in, in the county area, it's, I believe, all county and city municipal codes are misdemeanors on the books. However, they're treated in practical sense as infractions, meaning that most times that the violator has issued a citation and then that citation can be either paid or contested, et cetera. Now, there are trespassing laws with regard to private property. That is, that is a significantly stronger misdemeanor that could result in arrest, but can also be resolved through citation.
Okay. And the third question is regarding, you mentioned that there is other violations that have occurred in the past in these grounds and, and you refer to sexual assault and, and other.
Correct.
So, so now those don't fall, and I know that this is hard to answer, who, who answers to those and what pays for that, which is different than strictly, so, so how do you handle that? I mean, would the grant help you resolve those issues or, or do you take care today with your force those issues?
The grant doesn't address any other activity other than the off-road vehicle activity. In terms of the other crimes that we may come across in the, in the course of enforcement, then we would take action on other crimes that we came across, but the, the grant itself is not designated for other crimes. And currently, if those crimes are committed in, in or around the riverbed, depending on where in the riverbed, it'll either be the jurisdiction of the sheriff's department or the police department.
Okay, thank you very much.
Any other questions, council? Can you stand my chief or be seen? It may be allowed, but.
Okay.
We'll, we'll open this up at this time for public comment. I'd like to, to point out, in case there's any others here that have to pour concrete at five in the morning, that when there's an item, when there's an item, when there's an item on the agenda, this, you can submit written comments. The comments are made available to all of us and the comment, the, the comments that we receive in writing will be summarized. You don't have to wait here to, to make your comments in, 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 in public. Also, because this looks like it will run late, if somebody has already said what you want to say, I'd appreciate it if you just say, "I agree with the person that's said before and spoke" and, and, and let it go that. You don't have to use your full five minutes. We don't count the amount of minutes in favor of or against an, an issue when it comes time to cast our vote. Again, if you will observe the lights, the green light, you're free to continue speaking. Your yellow light, wrap it up and when the red light comes on, I will cut you off and ask you to, to close and we'll go on and let somebody else speak. Those that would like to, to speak, if you don't mind, starting to line up now and, and come forward, we want to hear what you've got to say.
She's already got my card. Okay, so I'm, I'm here to voice my opposition of the, oh, my name is Chris Smith and I am speaking on the opposition of the off-highway vehicle grant. I've used the riverbed with my family for years, first with my father when I was growing up, exploring for beaver dams, and now with my own kids as part of our family recreation. My main point is that the city does not have jurisdiction over the riverbed based on California law and legal precedents. Also, many of the complaints about vehicles seem to be more about violations on city streets by people driving around the river area, not about recreational vehicles in the actual river itself. I'd like to draw your attention to a few California statutes and legal rulings that apply here. The U.S. Supreme Court has ruled that rivers that are navigable for tidal purposes are owned by the states held in trust for the public. This applies to all 50 states under the equal footing doctrine. Rivers that do meet the federal test are automatically navigable and therefore owned by the state. No court or government agency has to designate them as such. The test is simply whether the river is usable as a route by the public. California Constitution, Article X, Section 4, says, "No individual, partnership or corporation claiming or possessing the frontage of tidal lands shall be permitted to exclude the right-of-way to such water whenever it is required for any public purpose nor to destroy or obstruct the free navigation of such water. And the legislature shall enact such laws so that access to the navigable waters of the state shall be always attainable for the people thereof. Obstruction of the free passage or use of navigable waterway is a civil offense." For example, Forester versus Johnson. A water may be navigable even though it is periodically bare or nearly bare. Churchill versus Kingsburg. It is not necessary that a stream or river be included in the statutory list of navigable streams such as set forth in Harbors and Navigation Code, Section 131. In fact, all waters are deemed navigable. Navigability can be generally defined in three ways. The state owns the bed of a waterway. Federal Commerce Clause, the waterway is susceptible to interstate and foreign commerce. California, Montana and New York have liberal standards giving the public a right to travel on waterways which may not be legally navigable under either of the first two tests. Additional support from California Recreational Trails Act, California Harbors and Navigation Code, Section 68 through 68.2. 68, the plan shall be prepared and continually maintained in accordance with provisions of California Recreational Trails Act and shall, to the maximum extent of practability, be compatible within other elements of the California Trail System Plan. In conformance with California Recreational Trails Act, the legislature hereby finds and declares that there is a statewide and continuing interest in the public's use of the state's inland waterways for recreational purposes. Also, Government Code, Section 66478.3, it is the intent of the legislature to increase public access to public natural resources. I also think that the amount of money the city is considering for river enforcement could be spent in better ways that could actually generate money for the city. The off-road community could actually generate a great deal of money for the city. Also, attempts of enforcement and vehicle impounding may actually cause more of a safety issue, creating a problem where one does not exist. Much of the river is actually out of the city limits and Lompoc and his Santa Barbara County. The California State Constitution, Article 10, Section 4, forbids individuals, joint and corporate landowners.
I'm going to ask you to wrap it up.
Yep, I got two more lines and I'm done. It provides, "The legislature shall enact such law as will give the most liberal construction to this provision so that access to navigable waters within the state shall always be attainable for the people."
Thank you. Okay, I, okay, I, I assume then that, that those of you that applauded agree with and then may not want to get up and say the same thing over. We don't normally allow the applause. We want to get on and let the people comment to us so that we can consider it and get it through with it. So, I'd appreciate it if, if that be the last time that that happens.
Hi, good evening. My name is Monica Hoyseth and I'm speaking today on the opposition of the off-highway vehicle grant. I can understand the concern for people riding off-road vehicles on the bike trail and street. They should be ticketed for that. But being in the riverbed where no one is bothered does not make sense. No violence or vandalism is being committed down there. Just off-road recreation that young kids and families both enjoy. In our town, we can't even control the vandalism, gang-related violence or drug activity. Why would we venture down in the riverbed? You take away the riverbed from these young people, they will end up in front of your homes and businesses committing crimes. Teenager and boredom don't mix. I'd also like to add that I can't believe this, that law enforcement asking for this money. I am a volunteer new duty aide at my daughter's school and funds are so bad that they have a donation box for hand soap in the teachers' restrooms. I don't understand why we're asking for this kind of money when schools are in such a crisis. I'd also like to mention the condition of River Park. The fountain and the pond hasn't worked for years and the water is smelly, polluted and full of trash. It is kept nice, it should be kept nice for the public, but there probably is no funds for that either. for that either. I just want to know where our priorities are at, and thank you for your time.
Thank you, Ms. Hoyseth. Next.
Adam Cameron. I would just like to say that I agree with everything both of them said, and I have the same things as, we have teachers being taken out of their jobs because of funds, and the trash around even the public parks is never cleaned up. I know many of the park rangers, and they say that the riverbed should be open, and we also, that there's nothing really to do in Lompoc for us kids anymore. So I was just hoping that we could hopefully get it open, and that's it. Thank you.
Thank you, Adam. Thank you very much. Mr. Lynn.
Mayor, City Council. First, you should understand that the closest alternate riding location is approximately 40 miles east or north, so there aren't very many readily available alternatives. I'd less like to take you back a few years. I'm told that in 1890, citizens rode their horses in the riverbed. Will Skyler told me that in 1920, give or take, they raced Fords and Indian motorcycles in the riverbed. In 1982, I rode a Honda down in the riverbed and watched a Yamaha beat me up the track. Then we had the park ranger write tickets, and then we didn't. And then we had the police department write tickets for a while, and then we didn't, and people kept riding in the riverbed. Then the sheriff wrote tickets for a while, and then they didn't. And here we are today, thinking about writing tickets in the riverbed. Back in the 1960s, 40-plus acres at what is now Riverbend Park was donated to the city for an off-road vehicle area in recognition of the problem. That lasted until the mid-1980s, when the park was closed because the city didn't have adequate insurance at the time. And rather than seeking out insurance, it was easier to close our off-road vehicle Citizens have ridden in the riverbed for, I don't know, what, 100 years, sometimes legally, sometimes illegally. And what we've done is we've created an environment where average people that are sitting out here, and myself included, occasionally become criminals for doing what we've always done. So rather than another program to write tickets and make law-abiding citizens into criminals, perhaps this time around, we could, as a council, establish an off-road vehicle facility in and out of the riverbed. I've talked to this council some time ago about the property that we received from the flood control district behind the airport that would make an excellent facility and would link to city property in the riverbed. And maybe rather than just causing this to go on and on, and, you know, we get a grant, and a year from now, the grant's gone, and when I talk about it the next time, there'll be one more thing on the list, we could actually solve the problem. We could have a facility where young folks could come and ride their bikes. We could have a place where families could get together and have their off-road vehicle activities. And we could create reasonable rules. One of the things that happens is when you make it illegal to go somewhere and fewer people go there, the people that go there aren't the honest ones that want to follow the rules. The ones that go there are the ones that want to raise hell and cause damage. When you actually have these folks out there, it tends to be a little bit more self-policing. Illegal dumping goes down, criminal activity goes down, vandalism goes down. But when the only ones that are out there are the crooks of life, then those things get worse. So what I would ask the council tonight is, you know, you may want to get the money, but let's think about how we're going to spend it. Instead of doing something that's not too positive, let's make a positive effort to create a facility that will give all of our local kids and some of us old guys a chance to ride in a safe environment. But we'll also bring in tourism, because again, the next closest place is 40 miles away. Don't applaud. So, thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Lynn. Next.
Hi, my name's Shane Martin. What he just said about criminals and all that, I'm 37 years old. I did over half my life in prison, and I finally got out and got my life together, got a good job, got me some motorcycles, got me a good wife and a nice little four-year-old daughter that loves to ride motorcycles. I'm still a hothead, as you've seen earlier. I'm working on that. But I met a bunch of good people that take care of the riverbed, that ride in it, that's showing me a different style of life than what I chose in my past. And being a lifetime resident of Lompoc, I like my freedom, I like the riverbed, I like to do those things. And if you take that from these guys, then they could end up like me, making bad decisions. We all make our own decisions, but you guys can help keep the decisions better off for them. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Martin.
Good evening. My name's Eric Moore, and I actually, I'm here to support all these people also. I was born and raised here in Lompoc. I've been here 22 years now. My little brother and me grew up riding in the riverbed. We've always gone through the issues of having people pull us over, park rangers, police officers, but the safety issue with that is, the park rangers themselves would actually hide in bushes and try to jump out in front of us, to leap, like pull us off our motor vehicles. That's a safety issue in itself, harming us or them. I've had police officers, which, yes, you know, yeah, we should have stopped, but tried to ram us off of our motorcycles. We go down there as citizens and actually pick up the trash and all the bad things that end up in the riverbed and dispose of them. That's what our responsibility is, to keep the river clean. I don't know what we would do without it. It kept me out of doing drugs for a long time. Yes, I have experienced with them, because, you know, I didn't have nothing to do. You guys took away our drive-in, you guys took away our bowling alley. Yes, we got a skate park, but what else do we have here in this town? None of these younger kids have nothing. Us as older individuals now, we would like to have our kids and take them to this river bottom to where we could keep them away from these types of things. I have really nothing else to say, but I believe this city ordinance is BS. I don't think that money should be spent in this effect, maybe to regulate down there, but not to enforce something that's not illegal. I believe that it should go towards the schools and other types of problems in this town. I drive down H Street every day, and there's potholes still everywhere. You go across the north and H, there's a pothole you hit, you know, every time. It knocks my alignment out. I have to avoid it. Thank you for your time, and I have nothing else to say.
Thank you, Mr. Moore.
Mayor and Council, I'm Will Skyler, resident of Lompoc. Actually, a third-generation river rat. Some of my fourth generation is here, and some of the fifth are now starting to enjoy the riverbed. Now, they're old enough to ride in various types of vehicles. Anyway, you know, I would have been nice if we had a preferred headline might say on the record instead of what it said today. The city of Lompoc, or the city of Lompoc, Lompoc Police Department, Parks and Recreation Department, is seeking a $176,000 grant to help support in our off-highway vehicle park, to help resolve, and I quote from the Lompoc Record, "Scores of complaints yearly regarding people driving off-high vehicles in a fair phase on city streets, recreational paths." Recreational paths. I guess you don't write off-highway vehicles on a recreation path. Or open land. What is open land? How about putting forth a little effort to help solve the problem? What is the location of these summary of complaints? Is it in the Robinson Bridge area? Is it the end of the airport? Is it VJ? Where are the complaints coming from? You're wanting to take a whole area or both and say off-limits, and I'm saying some parts of that property are ideal places to be. So look at where your complaints are, where they're coming from. One size does not fit all. The city has many areas provided for the recreation enhancements of its public. Tennis courts, football, baseball, soccer fields, additional parkland, swimming pool, community center, skateboard park, Anderson Center, the new bike path. We've done really well. But there are other people with other interests, and not much area been done there. Lompoc area is needed, an off-highway vehicle park. We had one for 19 and a half years, was very well attended. Was closed for liability reasons. The city, one of the options was that they would continue to look for an insurer and work with a group to establish, reestablish the park. Well, I spent 12 years sitting up there where you guys are, trying to get that done, and I couldn't get any support, so. And that highway is now what you call Riverbend Park. A study of the feasibility was provided. The state of California and the Green Sticker Fund, and if you don't know what that is, you can see me afterwards, and I'll tell you, for $38,000 was given to this city to do a study with Sidow and Associates out of Fresno, and they said there was definitely a need for an off-highway vehicle park in this area. Lompoc is basically a farming and ranching community, where its population are outdoor-type people. We have horses, a lot of vehicles here of off-road, Jeeps, four-wheel-drive vehicles. That's the type of people we are. We enjoy the outside, so we need to enhance those activities. I believe the city was formed to help accomplish projects that individuals could not singly do. So by pooling their funds and their resources, they could do things like build water treatment plants, wastewater plants, a city hall. So everybody pitched in and got the job, and I think that's what cities are supposed to do. Respond to the needs of the citizens. Well, your citizens are here tonight telling you what their needs are. I hope you will respond to those. Some questions for you. What about youth without a driver's license? As Mr. Lynn said, it's an hour's drive either way to get to the nearest place to drive. A 14-year-old can't get there. Who owns the public land? Your first speaker had quite a bit there. I hope your city attorney will go through this transcript here and maybe bring the facts to us of what is true and what is not true. Does it belong to the city? Does it belong to the police chief, the federal government? I think it belongs to the people. And anyway, as a 70-year-old kid in Lompoc who likes to play in the river, please don't take away my playground. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Skyler. All right, please. One more time, and public comment period is over.
My name's Judith Cameron, and I will agree with everything they say. I would just like to add one comment. A lot of us are single parents, and even the families at today's economy cannot afford the fuel to get the 40 miles for the kids to play, and that would be spending and hopefully staying the evening. Now, we're talking about hopefully reopening a park for them to play here with the guidance of an adult there, and not have to worry about spending that extra money except for maybe in that gas tank for my recreational vehicle. And I'm 46, and I'm right there with them.
Thank you.
Mayor, City Council, my name's John Johnson. Good evening. I just got a call about 6 o'clock tonight, so I'm unprepared to really talk a lot about what I know about the off-road community. I've been off-roading for 45 years, and like this T-shirt here, it's established the Hilltopper since 1945, just when you were all just toddlers. I would like to let, give you some information. I have a lot of information to give you, but I was unable to prepare it. I drove here straight from Los Olivos from a job. But California Extreme Sports Law eliminates Lompoc for any liabilities of any injuries on a motorcyclist or a quad, or for that matter, for anyone in a four-wheel drive. I have packets that I'll give all of you hopefully by next week to inform you a little more on the OHV law. $54,000 from the city. It can go for many other uses, but we do need an OHV park. Will's been riding in the river. I've been riding in this riverbed since 1984. Never been pulled over. I've talked to several officers in the riverbed. I've talked to the sheriff in the riverbed, and I've actually made a meeting a year ago with Sheriff Brown. He was called out by the CEO, Commissioner Mike Brown, and there was 20 of us there, and I actually made that meeting happen. And there's still people trying to work on the issues, but everyday life, it just takes, and it's the economy the way it is, people are just going different directions. You know, rape, any crime, someone getting beat up, or drugs, it's terrible in this town. You go to Los Olivos, you go Sainz, you go Santa Barbara, Oxnard, Lompoc, you're right on top of the list. The riverbed is a minute amount from what happens in your backyard. And, you know, just comments on everybody else, what they said. You know, the Forest Service right now has $25,000 worth of vehicles for the last six months, just sitting there. $25,000 worth of vehicles. And I've been a volunteer for the Forest Service since I was probably 20, and I'm with the Santa Barbara County Forest Department. And so right now, $25,000 worth of equipment that's not even being used for OHV purposes. The sad thing is, most of the people in the Forest Service Department and the city and the sheriff's department, most of them aren't even OHVers, and they're fighting against something they have no clue about. But anyways, I'll get some packets to you, I'll get you some videos, if you just take time to realize what's going on here. And I wish I was more prepared. Have a good night.
Thank you, Mr. Johnson. Is there anyone else at this time that'd like to speak to us? Seeing no one rise, move forward, we'll close public comment period and bring you back to the council. What do you wish the council? Mr. Lingle.
Well, you know what? I agree with them. I don't think this 176,000, well, first of all, I mean, I can ask them, but I don't think any one of these people, if we spend this money, will stop riding in the river bottom. I think what we're going to do is, as I believe as Mr. Lynn said, we're going to make criminals out of all these people that are just out there for a weekend with their families and their friends. What I agree with is our police department should be enforcing protecting private property. If you get a complaint, go out there and protect private property, respond to calls for service. But I'll tell you what, from what I hear today, and I've got a grandson, I'm surprised he's not here, he's out there almost every weekend. These guys are out there, guys and gals, out there just trying to have a good time, and they're right. We don't have a lot for people to do around this town. This is clean enjoyment for the community, and I would love to see us find a way of making a legal off-road vehicle park here, place, someplace here in town. And that, at the end of the evening, will be one of my council requests, that we investigate that. But for the time being, I would like to see the council not approve this bond or this grant.
Chief Dabney, please. Could you step up? I need a little clarification, because in my last 37 years in law enforcement, it's my understanding that the riverbed is governed by someone other than us entirely, correct? And I'm not talking about God.
What, are you talking about?
Fish and game.
Fish and game, yeah. They have jurisdiction in the riverbed, as does the sheriff's department. The sheriff's department has the larger majority of jurisdiction in the riverbed than does the city.
And what is the violation? I mean, per fish and game?
I don't know the exact code section at this time, but.
But the ones that the city uses is under which code? Would it be under the city ordinance?
Well, as explained in the staff report, if it's on private property, it could be a trespassing violation. If it's on the city property, on the right-of-way of the multipurpose trail, it could be a city ordinance. Or if it's in the riverbed itself in the county jurisdiction, it'd be a county ordinance.
Okay, and again, help me out, because I, maybe the city attorney can help me on this, but I know that there are ranchers that have wanted to go down to do some work in the riverbed and weren't allowed to do it, you know, to knock down shrubbery, because God forbid we kill a frog.
Yeah.
But, so, my point is, it doesn't matter if we say it's okay for them to go down there, they're still violating the law going down there. Am I wrong?
That's an area of law that's probably better addressed by the planning department, but anytime you do an alteration to any property, there's an environmental review that's got to be done, and typically, law enforcement are not involved in that. review that's got to be done, and typically, law enforcement are not involved in that. So if you're going to alter property, or build something, or something like that, there's a environmental impact report that's submitted, and if there's some, you know, if there's some issue with whatever environment that's being disturbed, then yeah, it could violate some state law or even federal law.
Thank you. You know, I agree. Thank you, chief. I agree that, you know, this city doesn't, I don't think anybody up here disagrees that this city doesn't have a lot for our youth. If you're not into sports, if you're not into FFA or, you know, courses or whatever, there's not a whole lot for this, you know, kids to do. But personally, I don't know that I could vote on this tonight without finding out, you know, what the legality part of it is, because like I said in my first statement with the chief, it seems like every time we had a call with the Highway Patrol to come out to the riverbed, it was always in conjunction with fish and game. And it wasn't the Highway Patrol that was actually trying to enforce it, it was fish and game. So, but I'd like to get some, and the first speaker, Mr. Smith, he did an excellent job. And, you know, all you have to do is create doubt, and I think you did that with me, so I thank you for that.
Ms. Martner?
Thank you. I would like to actually address the legal issue that was brought up by the first speaker. Could you comment on this, please?
Without having the opportunity to see everything that he's, was reading and knowing all of the cases that he's referring to, it's a little difficult. But in general, the laws that he was referring to weren't laws that limit the city or the county's ability to pass laws that prohibit off-highway vehicles from operating in the areas that is being discussed.
Okay, so those laws are now prohibiting in the city for establishing city ordinance?
The city has authority to pass the law that is passed to prohibit people from using off-highway vehicles on the trail that it built. The county has legal authority to pass laws to prohibit off-highway vehicles in the riverbed that it has jurisdiction over. And the city has authority as a, as a property owner to prohibit anyone it wants from using city-owned property, which is the, the point that the trespass issue that the chief was talking about.
Thank you. I would also like to address a couple of other comments that were made. I do understand the concern that everybody has regarding priorities. I do understand that perhaps the money needs to be spent elsewhere, that there are bigger issues in this city. I totally understand that. However, the way the government works, if a grant is given for a specific purpose, it can only be used for that purpose. It cannot be used for anything else. So if we were to receive this grant that is being, that is being for the purpose of enforcing this, we could not use that grant and apply it to something else. Am I correct?
Yes, you're correct.
Okay, thank you. So it's, you know, it's, the money is either used for that or we don't get it, okay? And we cannot use it. I wish we could use it for something else. I think that we do need to study and look, and look for funds to establish a recreation area where off-road vehicles can be used. I do agree with that. The city needs it. All of you out there need it, but that is not what is being discussed here tonight. I think that discussion needs to occur, and I encourage you, all of you, to come when that comes to the agenda item and support it, okay? But that is not what is being discussed here tonight, unfortunately. What is being discussed here tonight is whether we will approve a grant so the police department can enforce a law that exists. That is how I understand this agenda item.
Councilmember Martner, just as a point of clarification, this is approval for the application--
This, of course, of course.
--for the grant. The grant funds that have been set aside by the State of California are around two million dollars for the entire state. So the city of Lompoc would be competing with places like San Bernardino, the County of Riverside, San Diego County, for a piece of that two million dollars, which, as you well know, goes very fast on the state level. So this is only to make application. It's not even a guarantee that we even get in the running for the grant. So this, all the angst and concern could very well be a moot point if the grant's not accepted by the state and approved.
I thank you for the clarification. You're absolutely correct. So what is on the agenda tonight is to give approvals so the police department can apply for this grant. Thank you.
Ms. Rej.
I have a question for Chief Dabney. The California Department of Parks and Recreation, what, you know, what guidelines or parameters is this grant to, you know, how do they describe this, this grant?
Well, the California Department of Parks and Recreation, just like many other governmental agencies, wears many hats. I mean, they, that department oversees the, some of the state parks, the recreational areas, off-road areas, some of the state beaches, all those activities. So they offer a myriad of different types of grants. Grants for development, grants for building projects, grants for education, grants for enforcement, and they're offered to jurisdictions throughout the state of California. Now, you know, the, the police department learned of these grants, as I mentioned in the staff report just a couple of months ago. There, there's some of the best-kept secrets in the state, because some of the counties that have gotten these grants year after year have kind of, kind of kept that secret. And there are other partitions of, of state funds that can be sought by the Parks and Recreation Department, or other city planning department, or other entities of the city that they could probably use for other things. But this is the grant that we became aware of and, and to write an application for a grant for.
Okay, thank you. Thank you.
Sure.
It's, this is a, you're, okay, let me start again. I agree that there, with Councilmember Martner, that there is a need for an off-road vehicle park here. And I think all of you here could be the formation committee for that. And I would, you know, you want something to happen, you have to make it happen. So I think that would be a good idea to look for a place, raise funds to build it, buy it, I don't know, but I think it would be a, a good idea to start that going now. I know Will Skyler has, had talked about this for many, many years, and I think that would be a good thing to do. What we're discussing tonight is whether the police department should apply for this grant, and I'm in favor of doing that, because I helped clean up that riverbed two years ago. And as I understand it now, it's almost as bad as it was two years ago. So we pulled out two big roll boxes of junk out of there in one day, and our past mayor, Dewey's, helped with that also. So I'd hate to see that happen again, or we, you know, it was almost impossible to do it. But anyway, it's good to see you're taking care of it, although as far as I can understand, you're all breaking the law. So it's amazing to me that you get up here and say you're going to break the law every, every time you go out there. So, you know, that's kind of, I wouldn't say that myself. But anyway, I'm going to support applying for the grant, and in the meantime, I think we need to look into building our own off-road vehicle park, and I think you all out there need to help make that happen.
Thank you, Mr. Durham.
And chief, you can answer this from there. I won't make you jump back up and down again. And I apologize for misreading the first paragraph of this, because I thought that we were talking about actually having the grant. So scenario, we approve you to go and check into the grant. Then do you come back to the council?
No. If the grant is awarded by the State of California, the resolution gives the city administrator and the department the authority to receive the funds and administer the grant.
Okay. Thank you.
Mr. Lingle?
Just one, well, two things, actually. First thing is, we had mentioned setting our priorities straight, and Ms. Martner clarified that the money can only be used for one source, and she is right. However, the city is putting in in-kind money of twenty-five percent, and that is not grant money. That money can be used for things other than the enforcement of the river bottom. So there is some money involved in this as well, not a big amount, but there is some. The other thing we didn't talk about, I believe the chief talked about it briefly, was this is a one-year proposal for a one-year grant. And if this is successful in the one year and we don't get approved for the second year, we're going to have the vehicle, but we're, then we're going to have to fully fund it out of our general fund if we want to continue with the enforcement. And I think that could be an issue. That will also be more money coming out of our general fund that we could be using or for fighting graffiti, or whatever else the, the police department is doing. But, so there is a potential of a large amount of city funds being used, not just this hundred-and-seventy-six-thousand dollars in grant money. There is some city money that we're talking about as well, present and future. So I, again, I'm going to vote against this. I would not like to see us apply for this grant.
Thank you. No other comments, bringing it back here then. Chief, is it likely, or we're asking for a hundred-and-seventy-thousand dollars. Is, in my experience, when we've asked for funds in the past, we've often received less than we asked for, and we're told to do something but do only eighty-thousand dollars' worth, or do only a hundred-thousand dollars' worth, or something like that. And as you pointed out, we're, we're assuming, and this is assuming, we get any money at all in, in going forward with this. I'm going to assume that if we do apply, and if we do get the money, then there's going to have to be policies written, procedures written as to what, what priorities there are in, in using these, what kind of things we go after. Even some of the speakers agreed that there is unlawful activity that should be pursued. If people are, if people are riding on the bike trails or in, through the parks and then disappearing into the riverbed because they can't be caught, I'd like to certainly say that's the number-one priority is go after, go after them and don't let them disappear down in there. If it's people that are riding down there and, and not, not causing any kind of a problem, I'd like to see a lower priority to, for enforcement. Can we do that kind of a thing with a policy after we, if we apply for the grant and then see what comes, what comes in to, to implement what we do get?
Absolutely. As the council well knows, that we are, our department has always been about providing options to you of different enforcement methods, educational methods, ways to take care of our, of our community. So in, in that vein, this is just, this is an option that we put before you for your disposal. If they, it's unlikely that they would alter the grant significantly. I would point out that many, much of the in-kind money of the in-kind match is money that's already currently expended, that is allowed to be carried under the grant. I think the only one that would be an additional expenditure would be the fuel and maintenance costs. But with that said, if they bring in, give us a different amount to work with on the grant, then we'll work with whatever the state determines. This is our first time at applying at this, with this particular agency of the state. We've been very successful with other state agencies, but this is our first experience with this state agency in terms of grant writing. So if they do come in with a lower amount or some other suggested mechanism, then yeah, we'll consider that.
Is there a time limit? And I'm sure the state has some time limit for the applications to be, to be submitted. What, what kind of a time limit? What, what are we under?
Oh, we would have to, this whole grant process will be done before the beginning of the state fiscal year, October first, two thousand and ten.
A couple of the, a couple of the other council members mentioned that they would like more information or more, more study, but, but if we put this off and bring it back in another thirty days or forty-five days, we're probably by default.
Um, yeah, there is a, there is, I, I think that probably the latest that we consider this, that we could consider this issue and still be viable for any state funding would probably be the end of May or, or middle of June.
That's my question?
I have a question.
Lights are back up. Ms. Martner?
I would like to make a final comment, Mr. Mayor. I will support the writing of this application. And the reason why I'm doing it is because as an elected official, I have to abide by the laws. And what you are asking me to do is to look away. And I really cannot do that, because tomorrow I can have another group that comes and asks me to look away. I think you do have the right to operate off-the-road vehicles, but in the places that it is legal to do so. And I really hope that you can find that we can build a place here in Lompoc. But today, as I understand the law, it is illegal to do it in the riverbed, and I really cannot look away and say, oh, let's ignore it. I mean, I really, because the responsibility is too high, there will be other groups that will come and say, please ignore this, please ignore that. I am not here to ignore. I am here to just basically abide by the law of this country. Thank you very much.
Mr. Durham?
Well, you know, I look at it in a, in a different angle, too, because I look at, we've got four, you know, four, two park rangers and two police officers that are going to have funding. But I, I just, without, without having more information on, on the subject, I, I can't tonight vote, vote on it. If we could carry this over, like the chief said, this could go as late as June, that would give the city attorney plenty of time to get the information, to decipher it, get it to us, so we can make a good decision. You know, I would like very strongly for the council to continue this, so the city attorney can do that. But as it's proposed tonight, I've got mixed emotions, trust me, I do, because I see the vehicles on the road, and being an old road dog, and you know what I'm talking about, oversized tires, jacked-up trucks, loud exhaust, yeah. That kind of gets my motor running, and I don't have a ticket book in my hand anymore. So, you know, I understand, and, and I would, you know, if I had some more information on it, and I might vote a different way tonight, but if we could continue-- But if we could continue this, at least long enough for the city attorney to be able to investigate into it, I'd appreciate that.
Mr. Lingel.
Mr. Durham, if you wanted to make that into a motion, I would second your motion for continuance.
I would be certainly happy to do that. I'd like to make a motion that we continue agenda item number eight, to give the city attorney the opportunity, time-wise, to investigate the information that Mr. Smith gave tonight, because he sounded very strong and knowledgeable in it, and I appreciate that. And so that's my motion, that we continue it long enough for the city attorney to follow up.
I'll second your motion.
If a motion is seconded, I would like to speak to the, to the motion. I will vote in favor of the motion. It appeared to me, one of the things about being the mayor, you speak last, and it appeared to me from listening to the comments, that I would have voted for the recommendation of staff tonight, and it appeared to me that it would have passed because I think there were three people here. But I would much rather have all the information, not have a program controversial which passes three to two, and try to answer many of the questions that you've raised tonight before we, before we do the vote. So I'm in favor of the delay. That's one of the reasons that I brought up the question of timing in submitting this, because if it was possible, I think it gives us a better chance to be together on it. So we have, if there's no one else that wants to speak, we have a motion on the floor in a second. It is to delay it, delay this and bring it back. Can we vote, please? That motion passes, we're going to see you all again another month, a month and a half, okay? Thank you. Item number nine. Can we, yeah, can we kind of ask the people back there to move their comments, speak outside, not just next to the door? There's no, did they make more coffee?
Yeah.
I don't know. When I tried to get some more a little while ago, it was, let's go.
To the bridge.
Okay.
Frickin'.
Item number, item number nine. Mr. Irland, would you like to come forward?
Mayor Zmitzky, members of the council. The item for you tonight is concerning access to the Frick Springs area in Megaleo Canyon. The springs themselves are located on the west side of the creek with the treatment plant between Megaleo Canyon and the creek. Access to these springs has been made by two means: a vehicle bridge, which was washed out in a storm of 1998, and a footbridge. All springs piping is attached to the footbridge, that piping being about eight conduits. You can see here, there's a picture of the old crossing. It was a concrete crossing that just went through the creek bottom and up the other side. The footbridge is the lower, small picture. The 03, 05 budget contained $250,000 for the vehicle crossing. In 2006, plans were completed along with an estimate of probable cost for replacing the vehicle crossing. The estimate for the new vehicle crossing was greater than the budgeted amount and the project was placed on hold. In April of 2009- In 2009, civil engineer Robert J. Garing, Garing and Taylor and Associates evaluated the safety of the footbridge and deemed it unsafe. Mr. Garing recommended that the footbridge be closed and that no one should be allowed to use the bridge, indicating that the two cylindrical wood beams supporting the footbridge are in advanced state of deterioration due to dry rot. Garing and Taylor also provided an estimate of cost of $50,000 to replace the pedestrian bridge and a $16,000 fixed fee for engineering services as reflected in a letter dated February 15th, 2010. And that's the bridge there. Ribbons get kind of beat up in the wind. There's the cylindrical crossings underneath. You can see the concrete sort of footing that was put there to hold. It's somewhat undermined. The wood's starting to splinter. You can see it here. In the middle of the bottom, you can see a splinter coming out. Zoomed in, you can see actually the raw wood inside now starting to protrude through. And from underneath, you can actually see the deflection in the beam on the bottom versus the top, about midpoint on the photograph. So since February, oh, I'm sorry, since April, the bridge has been closed to access, and the employees, when required, to go up there do have to hike around or drive an alternate route. An environmental evaluation of the proposed project has been completed pursuant to CEQA, and a mitigated negative declaration prepared. A mitigated negative declaration was circulated through the state clearinghouse from January 13th, 2010 to February 11th, 2010, and was noticed in the Lompoc record on January 15th, 2010. Funds for this project are available in the capital improvements program Frick Springs Improvement Account. Staff recommends you adopt Resolution 562310, approving the mitigated negative declaration. Approve the project and authorize Water Division to proceed with the design and construction. I believe there's just one more image, and that's just a little closer shot of this, the old, where the concrete ramp went down and through. And again, that was removed in a storm in late 98. If you have any questions, I'll remain available.
Mr. Raj.
I, Mr. Irland, or maybe Mr. Wilk can answer this. You said the funds are available in the Frick Springs imp account. How much is in that account? Enough to cover?
Oh, it's, I think, didn't get the exact amount. I think it's $95,000.
Oh, okay. Okay. Thank you.
Seeing no lights, let's open it up for public comment at this time. Are there any comments for the public or questions regarding this matter? Seeing none, we'll, oh, are you rising, or? We'll bring it back to the council. Closed public comment period. I have a question. Do we own that land? Do we lease it?
No, the city owns the Frick Springs property. Their, the deeds seem to be coming into the city for acquiring the property around about 1902, is how I see it.
But that's not in the city limits.
No, it's not. The springs, I believe there's two parcels. I don't remember exactly how large they are.
Do we have, I'm sure, I hope somebody thought of this, do we have the jurisdiction to approve the negative deck, to approve the project if it's in county land and not within the city limits of the city?
I believe so.
Okay. I would, that was just where my concern was. I like the staff report. I think it's necessary that we move ahead with this. What are the wishes of the council?
I would like to make a motion. Let's, I will move that we approve the staff report.
I'll second the nomination or recommend it.
The motion? We have a motion, we have a second, let's vote. You always like to be last on a meeting that's run and delayed. All right, next. That concludes all the business items for tonight. Next, written communications. Do we have any communications that we want to announce? Any further oral communications, two minutes? None? Any council or redevelopment agency requests, comments, meeting reports? Mr. Lingel.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I'd like to report that on May 18th, I attended an NCPA meeting in Lodi, and there were, it was meeting, excuse me, March. It starts with an M, March 18th. There were 17 items on the agenda, most of them being routine. The one I would like to report on was the last item, and that was an item where we, as a city, opted out of the option of going with a alternate energy source of converting biomethane into natural gas. And the reason we opted out of this was we felt it was too risky, it was an unproven technology. And the second reason was that we already had more than reached our quota for green energy. So with a risky project and an unproven technology, we decided to not take part in that. That was my meeting on the 18th, and I would like to also make a staff request. With the support of council members, I'd like to direct staff to investigate the possibility of an off-road vehicle park, and if appropriate, make a proposal to council at some future meeting.
Do we have two other members that want, I think, comments previously?
Yeah, I concur.
All right. We've got a request for a staff study and report at a future time. Thank you, Mr. Lingel. Any other? Mr. Durham?
I concur. And in fact, if I'm not mistaken, we have a Lompoc police officer that's actually working on that as we speak. And I'm having a brain fade, chief. He just came back to the department, tall, tall officer. No.
Officer Martin, and that was, that was the suggestion. I don't think he's actively working on it.
Oh, okay, because last I spoke with him, I thought he was going to go ahead and work up a PowerPoint presentation and so.
He's very interested in the proposal of doing a off-road vehicle park, and I'm sure that he would dedicate some of his energies to that. And it was conceptual at the time that he and I were discussing it.
Thank you. So I, I'll be your third.
Okay, so ordered. No, no further comments from the council. The only item left on the agenda is adjournment. We are. We did. Good luck.